This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The chair calls on City Clerk Oliver Nelson for the roll call.
Councilman Harris?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Avery?
Here.
Eccles?
Here.
Stewart?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present and the meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilman Harris to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing to the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for your love and your kindness that you have shown to us even though undeserving. We ask that you be with us during this proceedings and lead us and guide us and give us wisdom, knowledge, and as we live in these United States, please let there be justice and peace that flows in every valley, flows down from every mountain. Give those who have hard hearts a love that will be unsurpassed. Be with us as we go through this process and we'll continue to give you all the praise and all the glory. These blessings we ask in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. I pray allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Financial Committee work session and city council meeting held on July the 9th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, could you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve.
Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of the accounts for the week of July the 5th through the 11th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, could you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
The mayor held up for some reason and he'll be here in a minute. He does have a proclamation that he needs to send, so we'll just go on and hopefully he'll get here before we get through. Unfinished business, we have none today. Number nine is a resolution awarding bid 3240 for body armor concealable ballistic vest. This purchasing agent recommended awarding the bid to Municipal and Commercial Uniforms and Equipment Incorporated in the amount of $1,001.41, $1,050 each.
I was just going to say that's each as opposed to...
The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, could you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
And the mayor's here and you're on, mayor.
I'm walking out with it.
I have a proclamation here for Jason Ivey. Mr. Ivey? Yeah? Come on up and his family or anybody, coach, you want to come up, Coach Baker? I remember Jason when I was coaching at Eddawall, he is at Sansom, when they got about 40 points ahead, the cheering section started singing Poison Ivy. I told the referee, let the clock run. He said, I am. I said, it ain't running fast enough. Whereas Jason Ivey is the son of Diane Treble and the late James Ivey and the grandson of Levy Ivey. He is married to Laquana Fulmer Ivey and is the father of two children, Amira and Joquan. Sorry. Jason became a basketball legend for MS Sansom High School, leading the Rebels to a 1992 Class 5A state championship his senior year under Coach George Baker. He was named 5A Player of the Year and was selected to play in the Alabama Mississippi All-Star Game. Jason went on to star at Temple University under the Hall of Fame Coach John Chaney. He was the only freshman to play in every Owls game in the 1992-93 season and helped lead the team to the Elite Eight in the NCAA Tournament. He was part of four NCAA Tournament teams and made 40 starts during his career. Jason graduated from Temple's Fox School of Business with a double major. Following graduation, Jason played professionally in the Continental Basketball Association in Australia for the Frankston Blues and he also spent time in the Beijing Ducks in the Chinese Basketball Association. After his playing day, Jason was an assistant coach at the University of Missouri-Kansas City and was the director of basketball operations at the University of Hartford. Jason Ivey was inducted to the MS Sansom Hall of Fame in 1999 and was recently inducted to the Eddawall County Sports Hall of Fame and honored in a banquet held at Convention Hall on April 13, 2013. Therefore, I, Sherman Guyton, Mayor of the City of Gadsden and the City Council hereby join in congratulating Jason Ivey, paying tribute to his full many accomplishments and proclaiming July 16, 2013, as Jason Ivey Day in the City of Gadsden. And I might say, he's a good citizen, a good person, not only just a good basketball player, and I can tell you, he is a good example of what we need from the City of Champions.
First of all, I say thank you to Mayor Guyton and thank you, Councilman Avery and everyone on the City Council. I really appreciate it. Thanks to my grandmother who set all this up. She called me at work and said something like, we're going to get you a proclamation. I'm going to call Robert, boyfriend, she calls him, and get you a proclamation. And I said, no, don't do that. But I truly appreciate it. It's an honor. I'd like to say thank you to everybody. I appreciate you. And I'm over at Run and Walkers Ford now, so if anybody needs a Ford, thank you very much.
Jason, when the mayor mentioned Poison Ivy, I can relate to that because his daddy, Penton Ivey, was in school with me and we would, Ms. Love, we would all sing Poison Ivy to Jason, I mean to Penton's escapades because he was truly an athlete at Carver High School. So it was a chip off the old block.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
And another big thank you to Coach Baker, who's in the Alabama State Hall of Fame, who I hope to ever get there, but he will help me out in my career. So, thank you, Coach. I appreciate you.
Yeah, I just want to say real quickly to Jason and to his family, Jason was what we call a role model. I wished a lot of our young people would adhere to the principles and the standard that Jason has set over the years. I've watched him grow from a little baby to a grown man. And Jason, we're proud of you here in the City of Gadsden and we just hope you continue to succeed. If there's anything we can do, you know you can call on us because girlfriend going to make sure I do it.
Councilman Derrick, you remember him too, don't you? Wasn't he on that team?
I think Coach Baker and he can both recall that I have a very successful record against both of them. I just want to say that on television.
One time somebody asked me, Coach, and I ain't picking on them, they said, does Coach Baker know what he's doing? I said, I'll tell you what, you get a team, get on the other side of that score clock and coach against him, you'll find out.
New business? Do we have any new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have a resolution I would like to ask for unanimous consent to consider today. It is a resolution authorizing agreement with Sunbelt Fire Incorporated for two E1 Typhoon Pompers.
Second. Clerk, could you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Moved to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes. This is for two fire trucks in the amount of $879,744. That's for two pumpers and these will be paid for over the next four years from the fire tax fund.
Any other discussion? Clerk, could you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any other new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have one. It's Resolution 143. It's authorizing advertising agreements with Yellow Page Advertising. Ask for unanimous consent, consider.
Second.
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Okay, now move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, could you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any other?
Yes, Mr. President, I have one item that I'd like to ask for unanimous consent to consider today. It's a resolution approving advanced travel expense.
Second. Clerk, could you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Moved to adopt. Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, we have, one of our council members will be attending a summer conference and this is just a travel advance to attend that conference. It's a one-way ticket. It's a one-way ticket.
We tried that before, Billy, it didn't work.
Didn't work.
I doubt that.
We'll keep trying.
At these prices, they going to drop him one somewhere between there?
I was only hoping we got, we double it and just keep on going.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Okay. Is there any other? Department reports, committees, boards, are there any? Marks by the mayor and the council, you want to start, mayor?
Yes, sir. Thank you. I got a report here from the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics and a consulting firm of Ghanaian Economics who published a research report on wage growth in the U.S. metropolitan areas from 2010 through 2012. Gadsden's wage growth was ranked as being the 15th best in the nation during the past two years. There are several reasons for this progress. From 2007 through 2012, Area Development Magazine named Gadsden a leading location in the U.S. for economic and job growth during 2007 through 2012. Gadsden ranked among the top 50 small cities in the U.S. and we also ranked among the top 20 southern cities. Our manufacturing job growth as a percentage of population was second best in the state from 2007 to 2012. Our employment growth as a percentage of population was third best in the state and the reduction in local unemployment rate here was third best in the state. We are, the City of Gadsden provides support for the Chamber, the Small Business Development, Downtown Gadsden, Commercial Development, Industrial Development Authority, and the Alabama Technology Center at Gadsden State, which is the Bevel Center. The latest research report on wage growth along with those economic and job growth reports show that these investments are returning substantial dividends to our community. There's a wide disparity in wage trends over the last two years and out of the top 18 cities, the hourly wages, December 2012, we have that listed here, the two-year unadjusted growth, the two-year inflation-adjusted growth, and a number of months with the year-to-year growth. And all of these cities here, there's 18 of them, there's only one in Alabama and it's Gadsden. And our wage per person has gone up every year for the last 24 months, so that means that we are attracting better-paying jobs and that's why we need more in people in career tech to get it trained, skilled, you can make a lot of money. I know some kids who didn't even go to the junior college to get certified. They took heating and cooling at this Gadsden City High School Career Tech and they started out at about $15 an hour for a heating and cooling company and they're making $23 an hour now and it's been about four years. Also, you might have known Kevin Ferguson, Eagle Scout and straight A student. He took electrical just to know a little bit about it, but he did really good in it and the teacher talked him into taking electrical engineering. He went to Alabama A&amp;M on a scholarship, finished in three and a half years and went to work for BP. So there is a lot of good jobs in career tech if you get the training and it's pretty easy to get it. We have scholarship money set aside. If you have a C average in career tech, go into Gadsden State. We can pay books, tuition and tools. Also, there were about 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, the bottom metropolitan areas and there's only one city there in Alabama. The rest of them are in Florida and Illinois, Georgia, California, Washington and Colorado. The employment indicators from 2007 to 2012, Gadsden was number two manufacturing job growth as percent of the population. Florence was the only city that was ahead of us. They have a major university downtown and they have a high cent sales tax which goes into economic development. And one time they had about $30 million in that pot, which we don't have that kind of money to help attract people here. We're ahead here of Mobile, Auburn, Montgomery, Birmingham, Tuscaloosa, Decatur, Dothan, Anniston, Huntsville. Employment growth as percent of the population, we were number three. And Florence and Auburn were the two that were ahead of us. And of course Auburn, you know, has the major university downtown. And reduction in local unemployment rate, we were again number three. And it's Auburn and Florence and then Gadsden, again, as well as Birmingham, Huntsville, Dothan, Decatur, Montgomery, Anniston, Tuscaloosa, Mobile are all ranked below us. But anyway, this just shows, you know, what else been going on. We are doing some good things. It's just a slow go. Of course, the economy hadn't helped a whole lot, but the economic and job growth, the top 20 southern cities, we're ranked at number 15. And I was trying to say Florence is the only other city in the state of Alabama that's even in the top 20. So I just want everybody to know, if we keep plugging along like we're doing and everybody gets on the same page and we've got a good council to work with, they're always on board, especially on jobs and economic growth, and our department heads, some of the different groups I called out a while ago, you know, everybody's working towards the same goal. So let's just keep it positive and keep working on it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. We do have a good industrial development department that the city puts a lot of money into every year. And Mike McCain does a good job for us. Billy?
President, the only thing I have is that, again, congratulations, Jason, for your achievements. You are an example of the type of residents that we need here in Gadsden. So thank you very much. We had our District One meeting last night, very well attended. A lot of topics were discussed and I am very pleased with the concerns that our citizens have and they turn out for these meetings to express them. And one, an issue that is being taken back to the police department that was very important to a lot of people is the response time when people do call the police. We do understand, they understand, that the circumstances a lot of times can dictate the response time, but at the same time, we're also asking that the response time be looked into on every incident that we have reported to the police department. That was basically it. Thank you all for being here. Oh, I'm sorry. And there's Mrs. Harris sitting out there in the audience. I was about to get in trouble there. Thank you for being here, my lovely wife, Ms. Harris.
I'm sorry. I just got a little sick. That's all.
All right. That's why I should have been sick today.
No. I want to recognize Ms. Harris as well. She's a lovely lady. I don't, I still haven't figured out how he snared her, but you know, maybe he was a smooth talker back in the day. Who knows? But at any rate, I do want to echo the sentiment. Jason, you're, you know, Jason's a friend and he and I have played against one another over the years and he's an outstanding athlete. And beyond that, he's a great student. He was a great student, he's a great person and he's a great citizen. So we definitely are proud to know that you are from here and that now you live here. So we appreciate that. I want to make a couple of announcements and I'll touch on a couple of items and I definitely won't make this too long. You know, the mayor talked a little bit about, or a lot about our, a lot, the most recent reports. And again, those, I think that it was pointed out upstairs that those statistics are, you know, not brand-new statistics, meaning that they're not statistics that are separate and apart from the Bureau of Labor Statistics. Those are actually, the Bureau of Labor Statistics, that's their data and it's just being analyzed by an independent firm to highlight some items. So, you know, the City of Gadsden is well positioned to do some good things in terms of industrial development and economic development in general. And Mr. Eccles touched on it. We have, we're very fortunate. Mike McCain and then of course Frankie Davis has a significant background in those areas and he helps us and they help us tremendously. They're well respected in those circles. Our big opportunities as it relates to these, and the mayor touched on this as well, is generally when we miss out on opportunities, it's because of the opportunity that we have related to technical talent. And then of course, you know, as you know, industrial recruitment is a money game. So that's a, you know, there's an opportunity for us to garner some support from the state to help us to be more competitive in that regard. So those are things that we're working on and we're working through the channels to get there, but we're excited in terms of where Gadsden is right now and we're going to continue to improve and get better. There will be some activities related to the Drake Kirkpatrick 21 Kids Foundation this weekend. I think there is a banquet that's scheduled for Friday night at 7:00 PM. And someone, please correct me if I've missed that, if I've missed that, if I've misstated the date, but I know, I know it's this weekend. It's at 7:00 PM on Friday. The location is the Pittman Theater. Yeah, and I think, I think a number, if not all, the council members have been invited. So please support that where you can. It's an example of another, one of our local young men who's gone off and done well, who's trying to give back to the community. He's also going to have a golf tournament that day as well on Friday that I really wish I could attend, but I won't be able to make that. But again, he's, and he's going to have a football camp on Saturday, I believe, that's going to be free to kids that meet the age range that it's going to be supporting. So again, support that where you can. There's a Trayvon Martin rally that's going to be held tonight at Mount Pilgrim Baptist Church on North 9th Street and that's at 7:00 PM for those who are interested in attending that rally. I'll make some very quick statements about that. I mean, everybody has opinions about it. I can tell you that I'm, I still think that we have the best judicial system in the world. I just think there are, however, there's some great opportunities for us to improve the relief afforded minorities through our criminal justice system. You know, and trust me when I tell you that I've experienced over, I've managed to avoid the criminal justice system to any high extent outside of a traffic ticket or two, but I can tell you that there are some great opportunities for to improve it. One of the things that, and Lee will appreciate this, one of the things I like to highlight is this trial highlighted the huge disparity in talent between prosecution talent versus defense talent. I mean, there's a huge gap there, I think, in terms of the level of talent. And that, now that's more or less an opinion, but I think a lot of people would agree after seeing this trial, there's a huge gap between what you generally see in terms of prosecution talent and defense talent. So again, please support that rally if you are available this evening. I think that's it. That's all I have.
Robert, try not to be too mushy when you introduce Jan with him.
Well, I promise I won't be mushy or too mushy, but my wife is here and I like to recognize her, but I also would like to recognize Jason and the rest of his family. That's one of the reasons why my wife is here because see, Jason's grandmother is my girlfriend, so we're part of the family. So my wife is here as part of the family. So if y'all, will y'all please stand? Jason's family, would you, just let them stand. Get them a hand here. I mean, you know, we're very, very proud of Jason and like I said, I followed him over his career and I'm just tickled after he made it back here. And anyway, I won't say what I wanted to say, but he know how to get to Birmingham, I'm sure. Anyway, I have a couple of other announcements and you did make one of them about the meeting this evening at Mount Pilgrim. But this coming Thursday will be my district meeting and I'm hoping that the media will help me out on this one too. We're going to have a group from True Fund, which is a financial group out of Birmingham who have monies that they want to lend to businesses. Let me repeat that. They have monies that they want to lend to existing businesses. So if you are a businessperson who needs some needs of financing or financial monies, if you need, if you're thinking about expanding your business, then I would invite you to come out to the Carver Community Center this Thursday at 5:00. We will have, I think there's going to be two representatives from this particular fund that will be there to discuss the monies that they have to lend and what process you have to go through in order to access those funds. I do know that they have millions and millions of dollars. It's the former C Corp. If anybody's familiar with C Corp, group out of New York, this company has now changed the name to True Fund. So that's this coming Thursday at 5:00 in my district meeting. If you own a small business or any business and you're looking to access funds for expansion and whatever, please ma'am and please sir, come to the Carver Community Center this Thursday at 5:00. That's all I have.
I'd just like to say to Jason and we're all very, very proud of what you've accomplished. It's quite a feat. We're very proud of you. I would like to ask a favor though, can you do something with Joris over there? No. Very proud of you, what you've done.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to recognize Coach Baker. He's here today. He was my coach when I played, when I had PE under him at MS Sansom. I appreciate him being here today. He takes care of Walnut Park Recreation Center for me and never have any trouble over there. When the coach is there, everything runs smooth and I appreciate that, Coach. You play ball? I didn't play ball. I said I was in PE.
Oh, okay. I thought I missed something.
When you're about five foot tall and weighed about 80 pounds, you don't do too good basketball, trust me. I do want to remind everybody that this is a third Saturday in Alabama City. We'll have open mic from 12 to 4 and we'll have gospel singing starts at 5 and end at 9. Hope to see everybody out there.
Hot dogs at 7.
Hot dogs at 5.
5.
While they last. That's all I got.
I was sitting here listening to Robert and y'all, Jason, you know we're proud of you. Gadsden is. And there's nothing in the world you'll ever be able to do with Joris. I've known him a long, long time. That boy will out eat you, he'll out walk you and he'll outsit you. Follow his lead. Follow his lead. We had a, we had a good meeting this morning, I think, with Nanda Patel at the Holly and Express with her staff this morning. I enjoyed that. I thought it was interesting and informative and I'm going to tell you something about Nanda. She's a promoter and a worker. Son, she's in that 10%. If you want, just put her in there and she promotes Gadsden like you and Blee. And now she's doing it through the tourism board and I just wanted to express our thanks to her for the work that she does. In that, having said that, I want to congratulate Mike Brown, our EMA Director. He's been elected to the Alabama Association of Emergency Managers Board of Directors. And Mike, that's, to me, that's an honor. And we all know what EMA does here. So I know what we do in the county and now you're on a state level and I know that we're proud of you from that respect. That's okay. That's why we put you there, Michael. That's all I have.
Okay, well, we're fortunate to have so many good people that live in this city. city. It's an honor to represent them, and it's an honor to be one of them. And this city has really done a lot for me, and I think it's done a lot for you, and we're gonna try to keep making it better and better, and you're just the one to help us do that. I'll entertain a motion, we adjourn.
So moved.